Have everybody take their seat. Um, I would like to, uh, ask, um, if, uh, we would all just remember, uh, the family of Sherri Skaggs. And she's been in UK for a few weeks now and, um, Donnie called me or messaged me yesterday and I talked to him. And, um, she passed away, uh, yesterday evening. So I'd just like for everyone, if they would, to, uh, to remember that family. Donnie's been a friend to a lot of us here and, um, it's just really, really hard, eh, hard to believe. It just shows us that, uh, you know, we were not promised tomorrow and, um, you know, I always thought Sherri was healthy and had no reason to believe otherwise. So, uh, Commissioner Lewis, would you like to say the invocation for us, please?
Heavenly Father, Lord God, as we come unto you today, we want to thank you, Lord, for all your blessings in life. Thank you, Lord, for each and every day that you bless us with upon this earth and our families. Father, we come unto you today and we ask you to reach down, Lord, to the Skaggs family, Donnie, and we pray, God, that you would just pour your spirit out upon that family this morning, bless them in a mighty great way, comfort them like only you can. Lord, we pray for the other ones, Lord, that have lost loved ones throughout our county this week. We pray, God, that you would reach down and touch them in a mighty great way and comfort them and pick them up. And Lord, in all these things, Lord, we pray, we pray, Lord, that if there's one that don't know you as their personal Savior, it's not about denomination, it's not about the old regulars or the Methodist or the primitives or the Church of God or the Baptist. Lord, it's about a personal relationship with you today. God, I pray that you would just reach down and touch the hearts and souls, Lord, of our people that's in this county. I pray, God, that you would touch this business that we're conducting for the county today. Lord, may we always be found doing exactly what you would want us to do while conducting the business of the people of Pike County. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Judge Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Scott.
Here.
Commissioner Atkins. Commissioner Lewis.
Here.
Commissioner Atkins, uh, is on the phone. Did you hear the roll call, Bubby?
Yeah, yeah, I'm here.
Okay, um, uh, this time I'd like to ask Sheriff Scott if he would lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I make the pledge of allegiance by the values of the fair, the true government, which is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is the approval of the meeting, uh, the minutes of the meeting of December 19, 2023. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Scott.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lewis. Any questions or discussions seen, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott.
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins. Commissioner Lewis.
Yes.
Judge Jones.
Yes, um, let's see here. We have, the next item is the sheriff's budget. Sheriff, uh, looking at this one, is this the one? Is this the original one we had yesterday or is this the one?
No, it's, uh, well, it is, but as you can see, she went back and added that, the payment to the fiscal court.
I got you. So this, uh, is the sheriff's budget. It carries the same, uh, fiscal court supplement. Uh, and as Commissioner Lewis wasn't here, but the court, um, covered the deficit the sheriff had because of the failure of the state to give him the unmyed mineral tax. And in addition, the unmyed mineral taxes, you would agree with me, is down pretty substantial, wouldn't you, Sheriff?
Yes.
Um, so this is the first payment back on the, um, uh, payment that the sheriff, that the fiscal court covered on this, so it's seventeen thousand will get paid back to the, uh, the court from the unmyed mineral tax. Um, so, um, is there a motion to acknowledge receipt of the sheriff's 2025 budget?
Motion.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner, uh, Lewis, second by, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Atkins. Any questions or discussions seen, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott.
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis.
Yes.
Judge Jones.
Yes.
Thank you, Judge.
And just to be, for the record, uh, can we modify that to also show that I made a second on it too? In case there was an issue of where Commissioner Atkins is present by phone? In case anybody ever questioned the validity of that, so we don't have an issue. So, uh, all right. Then, um, next item is the clerk's budget. Um, this does show a, um, two hundred and two thousand dollar surplus. Uh, Doug has presented this, Darrell is not here, Darrell's recovering from knee surgery and hope he gets, he gets, uh, feeling better. Doug, did you like to say anything? Yeah.
Uh, yes, uh, I just wanted to let everybody know, I think most of you are aware that Darrell's not here today. He would normally be here under these circumstances, but he had knee replacement last week and he's recovering. Surgery went well, he said, I want everybody to know, and he's getting better each day, but he just is not able to come in today or he would be here for the court. And like you say, we do have a favorable budget this year, we're very happy with it. Uh, and he would like to thank all of his staff and everybody for our hard work this year to be able to have this budget present today. And I think that's about it. I think it's a good budget.
Is there a motion to, um, acknowledge receipt of the clerk's 2025 budget?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Lewis. Is there a second by Commissioner Scott?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Scott. Any questions or discussions seen, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott.
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis.
Yes.
Judge Jones.
Yes. Next item is, Greg, you don't have anything, do you? Okay, um, Fabian, you want to come up and, um, you got anything you want to add or you want to wait till next week?
All I think I would say is that, uh, we do have a ship with a salt. So we placed two orders before the snow came in. We got one right in the middle of the snow and now our, this last order will, uh, should arrive today and tomorrow. Uh, so, you know, I'm saying, we'll place another order directly after that, once I see how much we need. Uh, but we should be good for, you know, like if anything was to happen this weekend. I mean, you know, some stations, some are saying that it might snow this weekend, some are saying it's going to be all rain, but we'll be stocked up for, uh, this weekend, hopefully.
All right, um, one thing I do want to, to just point out to the members of the court is, there's a couple issues. One is we need to do a budget update. Uh, Penny is off, I think, right now to issue up here today. So Frankie, if you could get with Penny and just get us an idea of how much we spent in overtime. I'd like to see all the time sheets, uh, for the snow event as soon as they're all turned in. I'm not sure we've got all those yet turned in, but once those are all compiled, I'd like to get an idea of what the total overtime is and what it's going to cost us so we can sort of figure out what we might need to do on the budget. I do think that we need to look at some of the foreman. It's my understanding that some of the foremen have been putting in, uh, a substantial amount of time and this is an issue that came up and I raised it, trying to find a way to, to fix it before, without breaking the budget, uh, is you've got foremen who are responsible for running the crews that are making substantially less than the people working on the crew. Um, it don't, it doesn't bother me as much, because some of the foremen aren't out here actually running equipment and doing the heavy lifting end of it. Is that a fair statement, Fabian? Some don't work as many hours as others.
Not many hours, but they obviously, through the snow, everyone works.
Um, but you know, it's not just snow, eh, because once you put an overtime policy in place, it's going to apply to everything. Um, we need to look at how we can make it more fair to the people who you're putting in charge, who have the responsibility, when you've got people working under your foreman, making substantially more. I'm talking fifteen, twenty thousand dollars more in some cases. And, you know, it just doesn't give people an incentive to want a boss because they get the responsibility. And, but there, eh, but on the other hand, whatever we put in place going forward is not going to be, it's going to be something, has to be sustainable. Um, coal mineral severance is way back, is way down. Um, Frankie, how much would you, just looking at what the numbers are, how much would you say we're going to be short in coal mineral this year?
I think, I mean, we're already under, or halfway through this, so we might have a better idea to do this month.
I mean, it's, it's feasible, we could be down several hundred thousand dollars from below what we budget.
Maybe three, four hundred, we cut the budget back.
Yeah, so we cut, we scaled it back and it's still not going to make the number. Um, three years ago or so, was it down to one point one million for coal mineral together? So, I mean, it's going back in that direction and, you know, what that does is it makes it harder sus- to sustain the services that we provide and we've not raised taxes, you know, um, and that's, you know, something that we've tried in every way to avoid, but the county just only has so many ways to get money. So whatever we do, we've got to make sure that we're not putting the county in a financial predicament going forward. So, um, but if we could get those numbers as soon as all the time sheets are turned in through this, maybe?
The paper doesn't end until next week.
So what, once the?
About the time that the February, everything through now and plus three percent of the week, then I can use the time sheet coming back from that week.
Yeah, we've had a lot of overtime, so.
Only other thing I wanted to mention, and because you was talking about the budget, I, I would like to address and try to get a salt barn built up there at Ford Mountain and use it as, uh, that way we, we're not short like we are. Because most of these lots are only going to hold for three, four, five loads of salt and that's just not enough to get us, because we'll run out so fast and then it's hard getting it in. My vision is to put a, a, a bigger barn up there, fill it full. That way, when the crews start getting low on their lots, they can run there and get it and replenish their, their salt.
We had some estimates on that and the reason is we were running low on salt because you had two storm events, all the ice. How many tons of s- of salt do you think we put down, Fabian? Through that, through the, through that week?
I would say each road lot is probably put down, uh, I'd say three hundred fifty tons, so we times that by six. So, uh, that's about what we put down.
And you know, when you're going through that much salt, you can't store it on the lots. We, we do need a salt barn and that's something we're going to revisit. So, um, but hopefully in, you know, a week or so, we're going to have that number that we know where we're at, where we're at in terms of the overtime. And, you know, for a couple, a couple winters, we've been able to get through without have, we've had pretty mild winters.
Yeah.
This was, this is starting out with a bang.
Last year, we did put down as much salt all west winter as what we put down through this season.
So, and you know, the thing is, when, if you had another spell like this and you, or a worse one, uh, then your situation where you're out of salt. We, we had to go to the state and get salt from the state, which we've got a contract with the state that lets us do that. But, you know, but they're also in a position to where they, they, they may be in a position where they can't give it to you. So we do need a way to store more salt.
Yeah, and that's, I was going to add to what you were saying is, is we, you know, we con- we contract with the salt company. Well, that salt company then contracts the haul back to us, to, for them to haul it to us. And the problem is, is, you know, they're getting these, so that trucking company is hauling all over Michigan, uh, Ohio, Kentucky. So then it gets hard to try to get that salt back in here, especially like when, if Michigan and Ohio gets something at the same time we do, uh, they, that salt tends to go there instead of coming back this way. And even the state has that same problem about getting the salt in here. That's the reason they build their domes to, you know, to store their salt in.
And that may be something we have to look at. So, thanks, Fabian. All right, we've just only got, uh, Frankie, you don't have any treasury business. Executive session, we don't need, we just got one clarification and this was to clarify, uh, it's my motion to acknowledge amending, uh, Plenny May's, uh, transfer that was effective January seventh, 2025, to include his longevity and to acknowledge hiring Philip Stevens as a loader, solid waste, uh, two H rated pay effective one nine twenty-five. That's all we have. Is there a second on that?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Scott. Any questions or discussions seen, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott.
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins.
Commissioner Atkins. Roll call.
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis.
Yes.
Judge Jones.
Yes, all right. I think that's all we have. Any department supervisors have anything? All right, uh, Commissioner Lewis, you have anything?
Uh, no, just thank the guys for all the hard work here in the last week and a half. It's been a, it's been a tough week on everyone and, and we definitely, definitely appreciate you and got a lot of, uh, a lot of people really bragging on you out there. I was at a, um, a wake last night for Bill Jack Fuller and, uh, up on Feds Creek and there was a lot of people come to me and, um, was bragging on our road department and talking about the work they had done up in there, so, um, I really appreciate you guys. And I know the overtime deal that you're talking about is a, no doubt, a situation that we have to deal with. But one thing I would say about overtime is this right here, you know, I know that maybe there'll be some, some situations that, you know, emergency situations that we say, okay, overtime's in effect. And then maybe just normal situations, if somebody works over, I know at the state level, um, and, and even in the mining level, a lot of times with salary employees, we'd use what we called comp time and it would allow them to, if they say work three or four hours this week, you know, uh, they could build up to like, say, two hundred hours of comp time and, um, you know, they could use it instead of using their personal days and vacation days and things like that. They could use it for doctor's appointments or if their kid had a gang going on or whatever. Um, and that, that was kind of a, a way to, to, to pay them back also. So there's, maybe we look at both of those, um, situations there and, and, um, help, help out that way, you know? That would be a, that would be a fix to help give back to the man that's worked over, you know? But I guess that's just something we need to sit down and look at on the budget.
Commissioner Scott.
Yeah, I'd like to hit on that just a little bit there. Uh, I more be glad to help them road form and to put all that overtime in. I know they do and, uh, I, I just want everybody to know that, uh, I'm for helping them, but we can figure out some way of doing it. I want, I want everybody to know that. And also, I'd like for you to put, uh, some friends mining pair. I've lost three, I lost one ex brother-in-law, but I lost a great guy and, uh, Mearon B. Lowe family and the Minor family and the Kirk family, that was in a week. So keep them in pairs and, uh, I want to thank everybody for what they done, you know? That they, they've done some great work through this snow. Them Fabian's crew, they've been out there seven days a week and they've done good. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Atkins, you have anything?
The only thing, I just want to send my heart out there, it goes out to Donnie and Sherri Skaggs' family. You know, I've said, they've said it all, everybody worked hard during this snow and I really appreciate it. Our road has been really good the whole time. A lot of people has bragged and said, we've done a good job.
They have bragged.
Really, like I told them, I did a good job, used to be in, uh, here behind these cars. So, that's about it, Judge.
Thank you, sir. Uh, I don't have anything else to add. Um, any other business to come before the court today? All right, William, would you, uh, close this out in a word of prayer? And before you do that, Roy, can I catch you for two seconds after the court meeting?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Let us pray. Father, we come to you asking your, your blessings on the decisions made here today, Lord, and asking your guidance for those decisions that lay in the future, and your blessings upon this county. We pray that the things we do would be for the betterment of the county and the individuals that live therein. And, Lord, we ask all these things in the precious name of Jesus. Amen.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Scott. I'll make a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes, we are adjourned.